of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks, Rob. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting and thank you all for taking time out of your evening to attend. We have a board president's message that I'd like to read this evening. The COVID pandemic has dramatically impacted the Indiana area school district for over a year now, turning all of our worlds totally upside down. From the topsy-turvy days of last spring's school shutdown, right on through tonight's meeting, this board and this administration have labored tirelessly to meet the demands from the ever-changing scholastic community, Commonwealth, and national environments. Throughout the last 12 months, we have done so with two overriding concerns. The foremost, safety of our students, educators, and staff, and the continued education and academic performance of our students. We have been successful in protecting the health of our school community as evidenced by the minimal amount of shutdowns during the last seven months due to COVID-19 outbreaks within our schools. However, the state directives and other outside forces beyond this board's control, under which we have been required to operate, have had a dramatic negative impact on our students' academic education. Last August, we implemented a hybrid model for educating our students developed by Indiana area school district superintendent Mike Bukovich and his entire staff. We did so based on the information and guidelines available at that time, and with the understanding that we would periodically revisit this matter throughout the year. As the first quarter approached its end last October, this board, in a formal motion, spoke collectively to continue with the hybrid model for the second grading period. Although no formal motion was considered at the end of the second quarter, this board, by consensus, agreed to continue the hybrid model. It also set a benchmark of having the teachers and staff vaccinated prior to further discussions on increasing the number of days of in-classroom instruction days. Again, both of these decisions were made with the information and guidelines available to us at that time. Again, tonight, the board will consider the question whether to provide more in-person classroom instruction days for all of our students, especially those in the secondary programs, or stay with the current hybrid model. But now, there are new guidelines and information available to us. The administration again has done yeoman's work in providing the board the requested and necessary information for us to make our decision with this evening. I'm very proud of this board, its standing and ad hoc committees, and the administration for all of your hard work, deliberations, determinations, and desires for the best outcomes of our students and staff. In my heart of hearts, I truly believe that while each of the nine board members may have different opinions related to which direction we take, we do so based on our individual beliefs as to what is in the best interest of all of our students. It is in that vein that I ask the board's discussion and deliberations to what extent, if any, that we change our direction to meet our students' education needs. Thank you. Okay, it's time for public comment. Jared, do we have some people signed up tonight?
We do, sir. But before we do that, can we go back and do roll call?
Yes, go ahead.
Barb Barker?
Here.
Tammy Blank?
Here.
Cindy Broad?
Here.
Julia Tomarki-Cucaro?
Present.
Tom Harley?
Here.
Mr. Kerr?
Present.
Mrs. Leeper?
Present.
Mrs. Lowry?
Present.
Mr. Schroed?
Here.
Okay, now it's time for public comment.
Yes, sir. The first person to sign up for public comment, we have Wally. And I apologize if I get this wrong. Swagler?
One last time. Swagler on the call tonight for public comment? Nothing heard. Jared, go ahead with the second one.
Jim Schaefer?
Jim Schaefer, if you're on the call, please unmute your mic and proceed.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I'm Jim Schaefer, and I just wanted to speak to summarize for those who may not be familiar with the current CDC changes that happened Friday. They still stress universal and correct use of mask wearing, which means a properly fitting two, three-layer tightly woven knit mask, no vents, no valves. They also stress physical distancing, but that distancing changed for students. They have an 18-page printout that you can print up on the CDC site. For elementary schools, student-to-student distance changes to three feet. The, it is still six foot while eating or during increased times of exhalation, so singing, shouting, band sports, that kind of stuff. Adults remain at six feet for middle and high school. It also changed student-to-student to three feet. In areas with low, moderate, or substantial community spread, we are substantial, that's the orange phase. It's six feet for areas of high community spread. We've been in the orange phase for nearly a couple of months, anyway. They still stress hand washing and respiratory etiquette and all that, but with this change, I think it is a very good time to review what we do going forward in the fourth quarter for our students, because they do make a stress bullet point, in-person instruction is prioritized, that prolonged remote or virtual learning has negative effects slowing or reverting academic gains. They also stress that K-12 should be the last to close and the first to open, so I think if the board all agrees that it is about time to open to the extent that we can. Thank you very much for giving me time to speak.
Okay, Jim, thank you. Who's next, Jared?
Terry Ray?
Terry, are you on the call tonight? Terry, are you on the call tonight? Nothing heard. Let's go ahead with the next one, Jared.
John Fisher?
I am on the call.
Okay, John, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to let everybody know, my name is John Fisher. I'm a senior here in the district, and I just want to thank the board for giving me this opportunity to speak. My message tonight is that I would argue that there's been a new sense of hope and optimism in the high school that the new safety plan for reopening the school can give us a little bit back of what we've lost this year. And I know it's not perfect, this year's not been perfect, but the school board and the administration and the students and the teachers have worked very hard to make the school a safe one and a productive one despite the educational challenges we face in the hybrid, excuse me, and virtual learning. I write over the plan, and I think when it goes along with the CDC, I trust the students in our district that we can make the right decisions and that we deserve to have as much in-person learning as possible. And so I'm very nervous. I've never spoken in front of this many people before, but that's just something I would like the board to consider, that we've lost so much this year, and we would really appreciate, yeah, maybe a potential going back for the fourth quarter. Thank you.
John, you did very well. Just good experience for later on when you need to address other issues. Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Jared, who's next?
Jan Dromeno?
Jan, are you on the call tonight? Jan, are you on the call tonight? Who's next, Jared?
Pam Fox.
Pam, are you on the call tonight? One last time. Pam Fox, are you on the call tonight? Okay, Jared, who's next?
Last one, sir, is Jamie Thompson.
Jamie, are you on the call tonight? One last call. Jamie, are you on the call tonight? Nothing heard. Before we go on, Jared, and Mike, we probably need to try to follow up tomorrow to make sure that we didn't have some sort of a glitch in our system. That was an awful lot of people who apparently signed up but didn't speak. I just want to make sure that there were no technology issues that may have posed a problem there. Okay, let's see, IAEA, ASME, SGA, or STUKA. Anybody on the call tonight from those four organizations?
Mr. Schroth, it's Paul McHugh. Nothing tonight. Thanks, sir.
Okay, Paul, thank you. Anybody else?
On the call and on behalf of SGA.
Okay, John, glad that you're with us tonight. Okay, Mike, I think that brings it down to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. My report, as always, is online, available for the public to review. Before I get into my report, I just want to thank John for coming tonight. Appreciate your comments. As a student, this board values empowering students to have a voice and have an opinion. It's quite impressive to see you be able to come here tonight and explain your thoughts, and that means a lot to us. Going into some of the great things going on in the district, I want to start off by saying we had our second comprehensive plan meeting, Mr. President, and went incredibly well. What we spent the afternoon doing that, they was really building our core value statements from a variety of different stakeholder groups, students, staff, administration, you know, private business, business owners, as well as parents. And the group that I'd like to recognize the most, besides the students who did an amazing job, is the parent group. And for a long time, sir, I thought we were doing a good job as far as communicating, getting things out to parents, but there's still a lot to learn for me and a lot that I need to get done. And the one thing that was a big takeaway for me, after hearing some feedback from the parent group, was, look, we want more chances to engage with you. We want to know what's going on. Involve us, continue to communicate with us, but we want to know what's going on. And I thought that was remarkable, because sometimes I get worried if our messages get stale or go the wrong places. And these parents are absolutely amazing, and I'm glad they want to be a part of what we're doing and continue to work and be partners, because, you know, we can't do this alone. If you look at how much time a student spends outside the classroom compared to inside a classroom, it's quite amazing how much of it is outside. And we need to make sure we do all we can to engage those stakeholders, engage those family members, because what we charged the comprehensive plan committee to do is be the architects of our community, not me be the architect. I'm one of them, Mr. Harley, no pun on your profession, but we wanted people to be the architects of their community and build something that's lasting for the community, that we can get some consensus. And it started with understanding of equity, then we moved into value statements about what we mean by our words and how can we live up to them as an organization. So it was a really great first step, many more to go, but we're moving along where I think we need to be. Second thing I want to update is give the board an update on COVID vaccine updates. As you know, last week, we delivered the vaccine to those staff who were interested in receiving it, and I just wanted to thank the IU and AMI. AMI is the subcontractor who helped administer the vaccines. They really did an excellent job in making the progress, just really smooth and painless. Also, I'd like to thank the administration at the high school, all the principals, the high school maintenance staff, as well as Greg Trout, Mike Travis, Paul McHugh, and most importantly, the nurses. Our nurses are just simply amazing, have done great work helping us stay open, helping us get where we need to be, but everyone worked together to get this vaccine, not only for Indiana area school district, but for Indiana County, and we're appreciative of that opportunity to serve in that facet and serve our community. So I just want to send a small token of gratitude, and don't get me wrong, they probably don't want to hear that, because they just did it because it's the right thing to do, but they worked hard to make that a possibility, and it went really smooth and caused it our hard work. Next, I'd like to update the board on some recent STEAM competitions. You could check our social media sites and you can go see what we have listed on there. And what's happening is, you know, your vision, your fruition of STEAM and STEM programming at the elementary schools is starting to take hold. Our fourth and fifth graders did an incredible job, earning first, second, and honorable mention in a recent competition, and our middle school did an amazing job competing at their level. And that's all included in my report. And the point is just to really showcase those teachers and what we're trying to build from a K-12 perspective. We had a strong high school program, the middle school's simply amazing, and now you see it trickling down into the four, five level. And I encourage you to visit my report online. You could see the videos, you could see the reports, and these kids did an amazing job, right? And they really did, and they competed against anywhere about a dozen other school districts in the region, and I'm quite proud of the work they're doing. So, you know, this took a little idea that we had a year ago, and now Dave Sheeran, Emily, Elizabeth Woods, I'm sorry, the rest of her team just did an amazing job, really, you know, bringing that to light, making that something spectacular. Additionally, PAA swimming qualifiers, there's some updates on there, they did an amazing job, but we also have one gentleman who won two gold medals at the recent state competition, both with 200 and 500 freestyle, and I believe his name was Kyle Tomy. And if I mispronounce that, I apologize, but he did an incredible job and represented our district quite well. Another additional sports program we have to recognize is our hockey team. They're undefeated. They finished the season undefeated, and that's a quite remarkable task with everyone trying to stay in school, with everyone trying to, you know, follow the safety protocols. So accolades go to those gentlemen and girls and the coaches, as well as the athletic oversight committee, who helped build the plan for them that allowed them to stay open and be competitive. So they did an incredible job, and I think their goal now is to, I think they have an edge on their chip on their shoulder. They want to go get the POG Cup. They want to win, and I like that about them, and we wish them the best of luck. And lastly, I'd like to give kudos to a student as well as Mr. Pushkar. Mr. Pushkar has a student named Dexter Froud, who was chosen as first place winner of the 2021 PAA's Don't Let Pain Become a Killer 32nd PSA video. He did an incredible job. That's also available on my website. You could see and take a view for yourself. This will be shown throughout the statewide telecast of PAA state championships on the PCN network, which at least stands for Pennsylvania Cable Network, and on the video boards of the PAA state championships at the Giant Center in Hershey, PA. So a lot of good going on, and it's a lot of good effort by everyone. We're all pulled together, and respectfully, sir, that is my report.
Okay, Mike, thank you. I'll express our congratulations to all of those student athletes for their achievements and the STEAM competition folks as well. I think, I don't think we have any presentations tonight, so I believe we're down to item number three, approval of the minutes and the agenda. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda and minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We'll vote in the negative tonight. Anybody opposed to that, please say no or nay at this time. Chair assumes that those two motions passed unanimously. Okay, Indiana County Technology Center, Uta, what's happening up at the CTC?
We did not meet in the month of February. There's a meeting tomorrow, so we'll have a report at the next board meeting.
Okay, thanks, Uta. Barb, IU 28?
Well, as promised at the last meeting, I would have a fantastic report to give. So we had a meeting on March 16th, and we have the normal, you know, retirements, resignations, and hirings, approving grants. And one thing that Aaron IU did was they approved a pay rate of $250 per day for substitutes from 20 that are working more than 20 to less than 90 days of work in an attempt to find substitutes. And the other item was, we successfully had an audit performed. My Mark Turnley CPA found no abnormal findings. And the big item for Aaron was, we hired our new executive director, who is Dr. Bridget Matson, and that will be effective June 14th, and for four years. Her salary will be $125,000 a year, and I am extremely excited to welcome her to Aaron. Her qualifications are outstanding, and it'll be exciting to see what she brings for the next four years to Aaron IU.
Okay, Barb, thank you. At the next IU meeting that she's in attendance, please extend to her an invitation to attend one of our board meetings and introduce herself.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. Tom, we're down to academic and extracurricular, but I believe as part of 5.2, Mike has a presentation he would like to make.
Okay, Walter, I don't have any committee meetings, so we can go right into your presentation, Michael.
Thank you, sir. Randy, I'm gonna see if I can present, so bear with me for one minute here.
Well, thank you, Mr. President and everyone, and hopefully you can see my screen. I know some of you may need to zoom in. I have zoomed in a little bit. I just want to kind of give some context to the motion that you're going to be deliberating on here very shortly, and give you my input. And again, it's simply just that input. Whatever decision you make, you know this administration and this group of principals will run through and get done what needs to be done. If I could, though, I would like to provide some background knowledge to the task at hand. As you recall at our last meeting in March, we were given three directives issued by the board. One was do some data collection about families' inputs and desires and interest about reopening. Two, provide some options, how we can increase the days per week. And then three, craft a motion for tonight's meeting, which is on the agenda, as you can see. So when we look at data collection, we had about 692 respondents said, look, I'd send my kid back to school if they are fully reopened. That represents 72.7% of the family survey. We had 105 families that would send their students back to the school only if we maintained the six-feet social distancing guidelines. And for what it's worth, this was asked before the CDC came out and changed their mind. And I'm not saying it's good or bad. I just want to be upfront and honest about when we issued the survey, to how the data may somewhat have changed, and it may not have, I don't know, but I do want to bring that up. And then about over 120 families who would remain synchronous and asynchronous for a major year for various reasons. And they were all valid reasons. The parents were very open, very honest, and their feedback, we're quite appreciative of that. So that takes care of the first task as far as data collection. The second one would be, look, Mike, you asked me, what can we do to bring more kids back to school, and what would you propose or recommend? And this is only a recommendation. Let me be upfront. The board can stay the course of what we're doing. The board can open up five days, but one thing I would ask the board to consider or have some conversation on would be, if you had an interest to open, can we go to a four-day week where we move Wednesday being a remote day to Fridays? And this does a couple of things. I propose this for four reasons. Number one, we have very difficult language in our contract that would require us to pay additional resources and funds for computer media instruction, which I don't think is wise at the moment. Not that our teachers aren't doing an amazing job. I'll be the first one to stand up for them and recognize what they're doing. I just, we have to be smart about the finances, because there is a financial cost. But more than the financial cost, ladies and gentlemen, I think what's more important is, we have to give the teachers the time and consideration they need to plan a quarterly, as the secondary teachers are operating in three different platforms. So albeit we have difficult contract language that's hard to overcome, we do have people working extremely hard to try to meet all these demands, meaning live in-person, synchronous, and asynchronous. And I think by doing, moving things to Friday, it allows the teachers the time they need to make sure those kids who are completely asynchronous or synchronous are getting the time they need. It's a lot of time to plan, a lot of efforts, and I think this makes a lot of sense. So those are two big reasons. Another one, I have an MOU in place that we signed, this is board authorized, that locked us until June. Not that the associates would never want to have a conversation with us, but we do have agreement in place, and this allows us to continue that agreement in taking care of increasing the number of days for kids if the board so chooses, being kind and considerate to our staff, and also trying to meet the academic needs of our students. And lastly, I would argue this, if you did the three-day, if you went to four-day and allowed us to have a three-day weekend, meaning teachers would still come to work, but there'd be no kids, on Fridays it would be remote, what we could do is we can count that as a closure, and you take Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and as long as we do the appropriate cleaning and contact tracing that's necessary, we'd be able to count that as a closure and be able to stay open for the remainder of the year without any further interruptions, hopefully bearing a terrible, terrible outbreak, but we think that would help our goal as far as staying open. We spread ourselves very thin, working on multiple different platforms, and the teachers have met that moment. This is just, I think, a step in the right direction that allows us to do that. As you know, we talked about the vaccination. You know where we're at, so the board stayed true of holding on to having this conversation until prior to the vaccines. That now has been met. What it means, though, if staff is vaccinated, it doesn't mean their families are, or the spread, you know, it could rise. We just have to be honest with each other on that. Also, we could be faced with a higher number of quarantines or closures if the virus spreads. I think the Fridays off would help mitigate the issue with closures, but we can't control the number of quarantines we'd be facing. And we have them now during the hybrid too, so I'm not saying it's a good or a bad thing. What my hope and my intention is, is to give you time to think about it and bring everything up to light, and allow you to have a discussion. And I have the administration on the call. We can address some additional questions after I'm done with the initial presentation. I would respectfully request the target date for implementation of this model to be April 6th, and that's for a couple of different reasons. It's the start of the fourth nine weeks, so there's a logical sense there as far as that move. It also gives us time to make final plans, to contact the families who don't want to come back or may want to come back and see what can be done to accommodate them or put them at ease. It also gives time for the vaccine to, for lack of better terms, kick in, but it also gives us time to see the Department of Health and PDE make regulations, changes in times, and, you know, clarify whether or not what they think about the CDC guidelines. So I think it's prudent. I think it's wise. I think this is one where we go slow to go fast. However, you have that choice to say nonsense, Mike, we want to open, and, you know, this administration will do what you say. So I respectfully bring up the four days, as I think it does, like I said, it meets the needs of our families as far as the desires to want to come back. It helps kids get the academic support program that they may want, but also kind of consider the, you know, the different platforms of work that our teachers have to do, and it stays true to the MOU that we signed. But again, if you want to do five, there's just, we could do that, and there's a financial piece that I previously explained. To me, this one would make the most sense for me, but then again, I'm not voting, and I'm only just giving you a recommendation, not a requirement. And you have the right to say no, like I said earlier, to increase to the five or to stay the course, and that's your decision, and this administration will be glad to follow what you see fit. I did draft up three motions. The one that I ultimately went with for your, based on your feedback, is on the agenda tonight for you to think about. And again, we can modify that how you see fit. And the last thing I have to say is, the one thing the survey did was bring up valuable various viewpoints, right, from both sides of the hour, both sides of this conversation, and both companies, and both parties bring up good points for the board to consider. You just have to decide what you think is best. You know, we had someone speak tonight about the changes in the CDC. You have to look at that and reflect on that. You have to look at our ability to lead us through this health and safety plan and make a decision that you think you think is best. And understand this, again, there's valuable viewpoints on both sides. This is about you making a decision that you think that you want to go with. We've met our moment as an administration to come with options and be prepared. I believe several meetings ago, Mr. Kerr asked, well, Mike, if we do this, when are you going to be ready? And are you going to be ready? And I think I've answered that resoundantly, that we'll be ready for April 6th if the board was so choosing to open. And you could go faster, and we'll meet that moment, but I think we need to be cautious and consider if the families who are struggling with this change, one way or another, give them time to process and think things through. It gives time for us to work with our teachers, make them aware of what's coming down the road, and allows us for a smooth transition, which a logical start date would be the start of the fourth nine weeks. So, Mr. President, that's what I have. I'll turn it over to you for any guiding questions. We do have the administration on the call, and it's your choice, and we'll be glad to... Um and it's your choice and we'll be glad to address any dialogue or questions that you may have, sir.
Mike, um I think the one question I have before Tom makes the motion is one concerning masks. Um uh maybe you should clarify that um uh upfront for the general information of the public.
Yeah, you bring up a great point, Mr. Schloss, and I apologize for not bringing up some of the public comment that was submitted, not spoken tonight. Have uh working under a belief or assumption that we can abandon mask and not wear a mask. That's outside of our control and we will not abandon that rule. We are very given very strict rules by the governor's orders, whether we agree with it or not is not up for dialogue. Uh what is up for discussion is we have to follow those rules and we would still continue to wear masks, sir. Those things are non-negotiable. We'd still continue to adhere to our safety plan. Where you would see a major change if the board decided to go this route would be, what's obviously the motion is the three feet social distancing. With that said, Mr. President, that is three feet social distancing between students. Staff should still do their best to social distance six feet away from students. Now, can they go help a kid one-on-one? Yes, because close contact is defined by fifteen minutes, but they should do their best to not uh to maintain six feet social distancing from not only students but from each other. And our health and safety protocol that we built uh has really done that to make sure that we can to uh we we make sure that we can um limit their amount of interaction. So we've done that. And I saw the one comment in the text box and I'll respond to that. And they're asking us to find, explain a little bit more. In the contract, uh we have language that says, look, if teachers are teaching certain classes and it falls under computer media instruction, they're paid at a per diem rate. By bringing every kid back in and not giving important those teachers that time of planning, prepping, it could result in anywhere between a hundred to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and extra fees. Now, the state, we could use the money we receive from the state to pay that cost. But it would be a large, it would be a large amount. And you have to ask yourself, is that large amount worth it when our teachers don't have the time to plan and prep and do what they need for the synchronous and asynchronous kids? And that's just something we have to bring up to speed. But there is a financial cost, right? There are other four reasons I stated, and that's been one of them, sir.
Okay, Mike, um thank you. Um Tom, uh why don't you go ahead uh with um uh the rest of your program here and we'll we'll kick this thing off.
I can make a motion five point two concerning the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one reopening plan. Based on the updated safety recommendations from the CDC for three feet of social distancing between students in schools, the board directs the administration open accordingly, providing all students in grade seven through twelve the opportunity to attend Monday through Thursday with a remote learning day for students on Fridays effective April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Remote learning, remote learning options will continue to be offered.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Uh at this point in time, I'll open it up for board members for further discussion, comments, or um deliberations.
I guess this is Terry. I can go first. I guess what I'm thinking is we've been successful with what we're doing. Probably the main reason is everybody's been working as a team. You know, the administration, the staff, the custodial staff, the teachers, the the union leadership, uh everybody involved, the nurses. You know, trying not to leave anybody out. But uh I think with moving forward, I think that same teamwork is definitely going to be necessary and and probably even a little uh more, so. So I guess, Mike, I have a question for you. Has, do you feel that the team, and and when I say the team, I mean everybody that I just explained? Are the are the vast majority of the team on board with going back to to classes four days a week?
Yeah, I think we we went this through and, you know, we think we we're ready to do whatever the board decides and wants us to do. We are ready to meet the moment. We think always having teachers um or our kids in front of our teachers is a great thing. What you have to decide is now the right moment. Do we think it's important for face-to-face instruction? We do. Do we value that more compared to online instruction? I do, and but does it mean I'm right? So I don't want to set a blanket statement saying we're all on board because that's not the question I asked my the my team. What I told my team was be ready um if they were asked to do this, to be ready for that and meet that moment. And we're ready, sir. And I do value face-to-face instruction, and I think that's important for our kids. What you'll have to decide tonight is if how much of that you want to have. That answers your question.
Yeah, and and, you know, I know that it's not going to be a hundred percent unanimous, but I guess what I was looking for, I I asked for the vast majority. And again, for the team to be successful, everybody has to be, you know, pushing in the same direction. So I think from what you said, I feel confident that the team will support going back four days. And and again, I think that'll be necessary. So that's my question or comments at this point.
No, thank you, Mr. Kerr. Uh I will say this, the Teachers Association, um the Ask Me Group, the every, the maintenance group, everyone's working together and working diligently on this. So if the board was ready to go, we're ready to go because what we have in place is already working, so we're good with that. But the board was changing directions. We've been working on it and I feel comfortable that this team will do our best to continue to meet the moment. And there may be hiccups and maybe bumps. We have to surrender to that, but the team has done an amazing job to try to plan for this and and get ready for the moment. And everyone's been working well together, sir.
Um Mike.
Yes, Madam Vice President.
Yeah, uh this is Julia. Assuming full mask and based on this, the results from your survey, which showed ten to twelve percent would still want to do the synchronous or asynchronous learning. It strikes me, which is based on those numbers and I'm calculating in my head, it seems to me that in many instances, you'll be able to go beyond three feet. Is that a correct assessment?
It could be for some classes, Madam Vice President. That's correct. At at the bare minimum, we can meet the three feet. Depending how many kids actually come back, it could be more than that. In some classes, it will be more. In some classes, it will be the exact three feet. We'll also meet the six-feet guidance uh recommendation in lunch if the board so chooses direction, as well as any high-spread areas or classes such as Ban and Correll. We would maintain the six-feet social distancing as well. And we also do our best to maintain asynchronous and synchronous for our families because we know some value that as well.
And full masking?
And full masking. That's required by law.
And then you would move Wednesday to Friday, and you're saying that's to to enable, in case there would be a problem, you'd have three days to deep clean and do all the different.
That's what I would propose, and the board can always keep it at Wednesdays, but I would propose Fridays just to allow for that safety buffer. Because I think if the board goes in this direction, continuity of education is going to be important, trying to stay open, and that would allow us a buffer to help us stay open. It's not foolproof. There could be uh high numbers of quarantines, but there could be now too. But we're just trying to do the best we can to help help try to mitigate some of those issues that may come up as we go through this.
Okay, Tamara, you raised your hand. Uh go ahead with your comments, please.
Yeah, so um thank you. All of this time, I have openly declared that I am not a medical expert. And my decisions were based on the CDC guidelines and the advice we received from um IRMC doctors that we've consulted with. So I feel comfortable um supporting this motion at this time. I think that um the change by the CDC um allows us to do what we've wanted to do for a long time. I will support this motion tonight. However, depending on the amount of students that stay synchronous and or asynchronous, I think that we should look at the possibility of opening five days a week. Um because maybe we don't have to provide that per diem to every single teacher in the district or in the sixth or junior and senior high. Maybe it's just one teacher per grade. Um and that might mean that some some classes were changed around. Um but I think that every year we we see our budget a major concern, so I don't want to write off not opening um five days a week, but I know that our administration is phenomenal at thinking outside the box and working out logistics scenarios. Um so that's what I would like to happen after this and possibly look at that in the future.
And Ms. Lieber, if it's okay with you, uh seeing what the board does tonight, we can always report back at the next, maybe academic committee meeting or the, you know, some sometime in April to give the board an update. I just need a little bit of time to plan it. We can do that um if you if the board wishes, we can definitely look at that.
Okay, Julia, you still have your hand up. Uh was there some additional comments uh you wanted to make?
I'm sorry, I forgot to put it down. I'm sorry, Walter.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other comments, question? Uta, I see your hand just went up and Tom's. Um ladies first, Uta, go ahead.
Thanks, Walter. Um I understand having the conversation about reopening because the CDC has changed the recommendations um from six feet to three feet. However, in the guidance, it still is a little bit unclear because they do still talk about using cohorting and remaining six feet of social distance between cohorts. Um that that is still a recommendation, which is what we've been doing successfully and are considering not doing. Um I think our local numbers um seem to indicate that um we had fifty-five new cases this past week. And our seven-day average percent positivity is twenty-seven point three percent. And according to the PVE website, that means we are in substantial transmission. Um you know, PVE may or may not change their um recommended instructional model. Um and I'm just concerned that while we may feel like we would like um like we're over having to deal with COVID. COVID is not over. Um and I'm concerned that it's not actually getting um better and we could be putting um our students in a situation where um we open and then we have to close, which is disruptive, not only to our students but to our families. Um and so for that reason, I would recommend that we stay the course. I am deeply concerned that um we're now leaning towards a conversation about providing different services to students who have chosen to do asynchronous or synchronous um during the year for um the last marking period. Um and would hope that um the services that we are able to and the learning modes that we're able to provide to those students um not change. If we, if the board does um determine that returning for four days a week for grade seven through twelve um is the direction to take, um it makes me incredibly uncomfortable. Um I think it's going to put additional work on our um our staff, our teachers, our nurses. Um contract tracing is going to be more challenging. Quarantining is going to be more challenging. And if this is the direction we do, really need to make sure that people fully understand what it means when you're quarantined. Um and um what the resources are out there in the community for testing and the like. Um I think it's too soon to to make a decision. Um and um I am going to recommend that we um stay the course.
Okay, Uta, thank you very much. Uh Tom, you had your hand up.
We're um looking ahead almost two weeks now to um what's going to be the sunrise on on April sixth. I think the trend is um that we are coming out of this tunnel. Um my concern, and I acknowledge Uta's concern about the risk. Um if um if people don't behave and we get outbreaks, we're going to have to backtrack. There's no question about it. At the same time I say that, though, um I am uh very concerned with the lack of academic progress this year. Um I think that um there's, there's a large group of students that are Googling their way through the semester. Um there's other students that have given up um and grades have collapsed. Um I think that the risk um on that front is is very clear. So um I think I think we um I made the motion for the four days. So it's not disruptive to the parents who who are synchronous and want to keep their kids home. Um and we're not disrupting that that procedure. Um so if you like what's going on, you can continue to do it. If you uh um what if your kid needs to be back in the buildings, for goodness sakes, let's get him back in the buildings. It's, there's no question it's a risk. Um but it was a risk when we allowed the fall sports to happen. Then it was a risk when we allowed to have winter sports happen. And and so far, we've been able to dodge the raindrops. Um and if things go south, we will reset this. There's no question about it in my mind. I don't think there's a high risk um of of that happening, but um but I know that the kids that are struggling academically are really struggling and and we need to get them back in front of the teachers. Um I also have some feeling now for how hard it is for the teachers to to teach to live bodies in a room and simultaneously to kids on a TV. And um I understand why they need the extra time um for the for the fifth day um to uh to do their lessons planning and to regroup. So um I'm I'm in favor of this motion. Um I'm I'm comfortable with it. I think that I think that we're doing the prudent thing at this point. Um and and I hope and I hope you will support it. Thank you.
Okay, Tom, thanks. Um Tamara, I'm not sure whether your hand was is still up or whether you had an additional comment and then I'll, if you have a comment, please make it now.
Okay, and I'll lower my hand. Um I just wanted to mention, I saw a chat, a comment in the chat about synchronous and asynchronous. I feel very strongly that we need to do both. I believe this is the way of the future. I absolutely believe that we've lost a ton of students to cyber schools because they provide synchronous learning. And I think that we need to provide that to our students. We can't stop that right now, and I don't think we can stop it in the future either. It may look different than it looks this semester, but again, I support this with continuing to be able to offer those services to the families that choose.
Okay, Tamara, thank you. Zinda, it's your turn.
Okay, so yes, uh from the very beginning of this whole COVID thing, I have been um absolutely steadfast in saying that safety is first and foremost, not only for our students but for our teachers, for our community. And it is clear that COVID is not over. It is clear that, yes, we are in a a time now where the numbers have gone down. They ha- went down slowly, remained steady for a while. Now they tend to be trying to creep up a bit again. Um face-to-face learning is more valuable. Yes, absolutely. But again, safety first. Um I understand that the desire for people to want to have their kids come back to school. I understand the desire for people to want to go back out to restaurants. I understand the desire for people to want to go to crowded football games, but COVID is not gone. Um I'm really um I'm torn about the CDC changing the social this guidance because I think that we have made a lot of progress and we have learned a lot about how to keep us safe from COVID and how to treat the disease. But I'm afraid that this social guideline change at this point is partially a reaction to the the general pressure from the public saying, we're tired of this. Well, sometimes you just need to go a little bit farther. Um yes, you know, Tom said it looks like we're coming out of the tunnel and I agree, we are coming out of the tunnel, but then you look at the rest of the world, Europe thought they were coming out of the tunnel too, and now France is going back into lockdown. I've got a friend in Germany, they are going back into lockdown. Italy is going into a really severe lockdown. They, like everybody else in the world, you know, they get tired and they start to relax and they end up, COVID comes back. I don't want us to be arrogant enough to say and to feel and to act as though we are better than the rest of the world. We know more than the rest of the world. We are safer than the rest of the world. We have a lot of advantages here, but when it comes to this virus, everybody is equal. So I I still think that the hybrid model that we've been using has saved us from having to shut down quarantine as many students as other places have had to do. It's going to be a a big um burden on the nurses and and I thank them so much for everything they've done so far. If if we have a shutdown on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and we have a student who tests positive, those nurses are going to end up spending their weekend working with are going to end up spending their weekend working with the Department of Health at the quarantine. It's, it's a lot of work for everybody to try to do this when I'm not convinced that we're going to be successful and it's going to be safe. So again, I am totally safety first and my vote is to stay the course.
Okay, Zinda. Carrie, I think you'd raised your hand. Anything else you'd like to add, please?
Yeah, one other thing. And, because I wondered about this too, is how the other schools were able to open or stay open. And talking with several of them, other board members from other schools and teachers, they were able to maintain the six foot distance from the get-go. They have, their enrollments have reduced over the years or decades and they had more room to. And if Indiana had that benefit, we, you know, could have had this discussion months ago. So that was all I was gonna add. Thanks, Walter.
Okay. Barb, we haven't heard from you. Do you have any thoughts on this to share with the board or the, or the community?
I just want to say along, I said I would follow the CDC and the state's guidelines for how we should open our schools. And the CDC recently said three feet. So I, I feel we are able to go with those guidelines. If I recall, we haven't seen at the six feet much spread, if, if any. I, I don't know about all of the cases, no one in the superintendent could speak for that. But I know students are struggling. Learning math and science is really hard to do remotely. And if the CDC thinks three feet, I say we give it a go. We try for the three feet. If it doesn't work, we can always go back to the hybrid method. We, we know it works. But I, I think that the risk is worth it to try for our students. But there will be quarantines, potential shutdowns. And parents need to know that it will be important that the kids wear their masks above their nose while in school and they take precautions to keep this going. That we, we can't, the other precautions such as, you know, sanitizing and the mask wearing, when masks aren't worn, that we are six feet apart, ventilation, that we keep those up and they're, they're important. So I, I support this motion, but things can change. And new guidelines could come out next week that could change, change what we're talking about here tonight. And so it's, it's always been this whole year of fluid situation. So as of right now, I, I support this.
Okay, Barb, thank you for your input. Tammy Blank, I don't think we've heard from you yet this evening. Would you care to share your thoughts with the board and the community?
Yes, I want to say first of all, thanks to everybody, the administration, the teachers, the students. They've had to work really hard to maintain what we've gotten done with the spread being so low. And at the same time, you know, the kids are suffering. I mean, a lot of the kids are having problems staying at home alone or trying to learn remotely. And I'm, I'm for this. For the four days a week, I support it. I also am cautious because while the kids will benefit from the academic side and the social side, I also know that people will see this as, hey, you know, they're back at school. Let's see what else we can get. What, can we have, let's just open everything up. Let's, let's get this chorus all together in one room and so on and so forth. You know, the inch, taking an inch, giving an inch and taking a mile. But we've got to keep going slow. And if people want to keep their kids going to school four days a week or more, we're going to have to work, keep working on, you know, maintaining distance, being as safe as we can. That's it.
Okay, thank, thank you, Tammy. At this point, I'll call for any other comments that board members may have on this. Okay, so hearing nothing, I guess it's my turn. I really believe that it is the right thing to do at this point in time to open, open back up to at least the four days of in classroom. My biggest concern is the impact that this has had academically on our students. I know one of Tom's favorite expressions is that all of our kids have a date stamp on them. We get them from age six up through 18 and then they're gone. And we have to do everything we can to provide that education experience to the greatest, greatest extent possible. I feel very strongly that the kids have suffered, possibly from psychological, but especially from academic. And I believe that we need to take this step to help with that remediation. I'm not so sure that, well, I understand the, the unknown and the concerns over the unknown. But I think with all of the safety valves that we've put in place, continuing to wear the mask, continuing to follow the CDC guidelines on six foot other than in the classroom, which is the real limiting parameter, we still have a number of safety guideline, safety protocols in place and some potential plans might fill out in the next two weeks to return to the, this scenario should the outbreak really become outrageous in, in total numbers. I also think that the vaccine has really started to take effect. I understand from the CDC that they're now considering people to be fully vaccinated after two weeks of receiving their final shot. More people are getting vaccinated every day. I also understand that the IRMC has lowered the minimum age to 55 to give shots, though I don't know that for a fact, but there does seem to be more vaccine available. You know, the governor went to a great effort to make sure that all of our teachers and staff got their vaccines. And it just seems to me that now is the right time for, for the best interest of all of our students. So at this point, I will support this motion as well. One last call for board members. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? Okay, hearing none. Jared, I believe that we should do this as a roll call vote, please. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, just hold, hold up one minute. I, I do want to point out, you know, Mike has recommended the four days. If there's any strong feelings on the board that they would like to consider going more than the four days, please, please let us know at this point before we, before we actually call the question. Tamara, go ahead.
I mean, I really think we should try. I'm just reviewing an email that Rob sent us a couple of weeks ago that shows that, that there are 608 hybrid students, 171 were full-time synchronous and 117 ideal at the high school. So to me, that 117 ideal are probably going to stay ideal. I don't know how many full synchronous will come back. I, I think we need to explore the five days a week. So I'm not sure how that changes this motion, if we should vote on this and have administration look into five days a week. But I definitely think we should look into that. And then, again, if we have an outbreak and need to close and need to go back to the four days a week, just to have a three-day-a-week buffer that this, or the, whatever's required to say that we've been closed long enough after so many cases were identified, then we could do that. But I think we should look at five.
Okay, thanks, Tamara. Julia, you had your hand up, please.
I'm satisfied with the motion as is for now. I think the, the four day, I mean, it's, it's a segue into another step for us and we have to see how this goes. It does seem to me that this business of having a long weekend as a sort of a hedge or a backstop for us is sensible. So I'm a little reluctant to, to go five days. I know there are people that think that's necessary. And educationally, yeah. But, you know, we do have, we do have this goal of flexibility. And yeah, we can look at five days, but right now I'd like to just look at the four days. I'm in favor of that. And wait and see how we go for the, for a few weeks after that. So thank you very much.
Okay, Julia, thank you. One of the things that we've done throughout this process for the, basically for the last year, is taken a very methodical look at, at all of these things. And Mike, I'm gonna kind of speak a little bit out of turn here, but I think it would be safe to say that, you know, as of tonight, you don't really have plans fully fleshed out to do five days at this point. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, if the board said go five days, we could do it. I mean, we just, we have, the big thing that I have to meet with the association and work on the MOU. There is a MOU placed that puts in the one day off. We would have to go negotiate with them and try to change the MOU, but the MOU is in place up until June. We would have to go back and meet with them, which we have not done yet, because we were waiting for tonight's conversation. We didn't know how we were gonna go.
Okay. Julia, your hand is still up. Did you want to say anything else?
No, I'm sorry. I did it again. Thanks.
That's okay. Well, my recommendation would be this, to go ahead and approve the motion as it, as it is stated. Looking at it as Julia suggested, as a segue, and then have Mike begin exploration of, of whether or not we could at some point move to five days. And if so, then the board can certainly consider that, you know, at a meeting in, in April, or as would be appropriate. Uta and Tom have both raised their hands. Go ahead, Uta.
I think we're really putting the cart before the horse now. If we're really gonna open four days a week, can we see how that works before we even talk about putting something up for discussion in April for five days? I just think if this is the direction that the board wants to take, we should see how it works before we look at expanding it further.
Good comment, Uta. Tom, you, you raised your hand?
Yes, I don't have any objection for Mike talking to the union. But I agree with him that, that the four days is, is a big enough jump today. If, if, if some miracle disappears and everything's coming up roses in, in, in four weeks, we can certainly revisit it. But, but we better be damn sure before we go that far. So I don't have any objection to starting the conversation, but I'm, I want to see, see how we do before we, we jump on that boat. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Any last comments before I call the question in the roll call? Okay, Tom and Uta, you both still have your hands up. I'm assuming that we're very good. Okay, Jared, let's go back and have that roll call now.
Yes, sir. Barb Barker?
Yes.
Tammy Blank?
Yes.
Zinda Brode?
No.
Julia Tamarkey-Cucuro?
Yes.
Tom Harley?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeper?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
No.
Mr. Schroed?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to two.
Okay, I thank everyone and I appreciate your, your comments and your voting your, your hearts tonight. Policy and Personnel, Uta, looks like you've got a couple of motions here.
Okay, we don't have a committee report. We had a meeting prior to the board meeting two weeks ago. So I can't see them all. Does anybody want any of these motions pulled out before I recommend that we do them as a group? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to move that we approve the sabbatical leave of absence, the approval of the board policies, 137.1, 150, and 005, committee appointment to academic and extracurricular committee, the special education positions, summer school staff, and the leave extension request as written on the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved in second to accept six, two, I believe, through six, seven. Questions, comments, or discussion on any of those motions? Mike, is there anything you would like to add? Any input on, on any of them, special ed position or any of those things that we're looking at?
No, I think the big one for us is, you know, even though it's semantics, we've all talked about and agreed upon, it would be the summer school staff. We're gearing up, trying to get that ready to go and have that ready to roll out like the board asks us to. So I, I think it's a step in the right direction and, and it makes sense for all of us, sir. So I appreciate, I support all the recommendations that are on here. And I hope we can move forward. I think the one thing will be interesting is the committee appointments. You know, this board values involving other stakeholders involved in our processes and decision-making. So this is yet again, another opportunity to allow for input and dialogue to occur, even the most difficult conversations. So they have my full support, sir.
Okay, Mike, thank you. Any further comment on the, from the board? Tamara, looks like your hand's up. Something you'd like to add to this?
Yeah, so regarding the special education position, that is for the, a new autistic support classroom. And I just want to make sure that this person will be, have an autism certificate. And I mean, I know that we can't always know who we're going to hire. But I think that this is very important. So I guess the first question is, will this person need to have an autism certificate?
We, we are going to look at the sleeper for ABA training either as a pre-conditional employment, or we'll get them trained prior to student role. We think that is important that they have some ABA training. Justin, I know you're on the call. You want to elaborate about some of the supports we're expecting in certification program?
Yeah, that's, Mike, I, I think you hit it on the head. I think there's a lot of times that folks with special education certificates do, there's a lot that will apply that don't have that ABA certificate. So if we do, and, and looking at the best quality candidates, that will definitely be a consideration. But also keeping in mind that they do typically offer the ABA boot camp over the summer months and, and we would require that before they start.
And will they need to have the PTA training and VB MAP? Or is the ABA the same as the VB MAP?
Yeah, the ABA, the ABA boot camp does go over the VB MAP training as well in the summer months.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Cameron, thanks. Uta, your mic's hot.
I have one more question. So with adding an additional teacher in the autistic support classroom, I would assume we will need more paraprofessionals to, because it will be a new classroom. Will we be able to ensure that those professionals will have some training in autistic support too? Because that is just not a classroom that you can walk into with no training as a support staff member.
Yes. So one thing-
So one thing that we did this past summer was we had two of, one of our paraprofessionals that was at in the autistic support room is now a is substitute teaching for us. And that person is scheduled to go back in the autistic support room. And one thing that did happen is we had two additional paraprofessionals trained this past summer that are currently in our current autistic support room. So it would it would be at most one paraprofessional that we would need to hire in addition to the teacher.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tamara. Uta, did was there anything you wanted to add to the to the discussion?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll again vote for these in the negative. If you're opposed to any of these motions, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The chair assumes that all motions passed unanimously. Okay, Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation, Terry, it's your turn.
Okay, thank you, Walter. We did have a meeting last Monday night, March 15th. First thing we talked about at length was the removal of some white pine trees along the East Pike parking lot, parallels parking lot there. So we couldn't come to the consensus on whether we should trim them, remove them, so we had asked the administration to go back and look at some things there. Next thing was the upgrades to the high school auditorium. There was some additional cost that was found from some equipment that needs replaced. So they're in the process of putting together a better estimate of what upgrading that sound system will cost. Then we heard a good presentation from Mr. Towne with Constellation on the investment grade audit report dealing with a possible ESCO project. So again, we asked for some revisions and discussion, further discussion on that before we move forward with it. We had asked that it be discussed at the Audit Finance Committee meeting tonight, so that was done. And again, there was more questions brought up there with that. We, Jared just presented to the committee that the our architect director, Bucard Horn, was not completed with their revised sketches for Eisenhower, so we basically tabled that for the next meeting. Got an update on the East Pike entranceway. It's moving along and nearly finished. There was positive reports there. I think we'd asked that the next meeting some pictures be shown of that entranceway. And we got a transportation update. There was really nothing to report there. That's all I have, Walter. Thank you.
Okay, Terry, thank you. We're down to Audit and Finance. Julia, what's happening at Audit and Finance tonight?
Thanks, Walter. Lots happening at Audit and Finance. We had a great meeting tonight. Many of the motions follow what our agenda was tonight. There's a few motions I'd like to pull out. But we went over the food service budget. We're pleased to the pleased to hear that the administration is not recommending that any prices on our food servings go up. So that was it, that was a good bit of news. We talked about the propane situation in our bids, and we're recommending that we, for various reasons, reject the bids and start over again for our propane needs. We have the list, excuse me, I'm looking at the, oh, we talked about the Liast Tire subdivision work. We want to make sure that our boundaries are crisp around both Eisenhower and the high schools, so we had a presentation about that. Interestingly, we talked about the Chromebook purchase for 2021, '22, and we got an education on, it was really instructive, on how we go about repairing these Chromebooks, how how they're not toys, they are serious learning instruments, and what we have to go through to keep everything running, and, you know, the buyback situation with students. So it was a very, it was interesting and instructional. We also had an opportunity to go over the food service budget itself, which is complicated when you read it, to follow what they're saying. So I'm gonna ask that that budget item be moved out so that Jared can talk to us a little bit about how that works. The pandemic has definitely caused some slippish, but we're able to cover that. And because of that, we're still able to offer the same prices as last year on our food. We, I thought for me, the most interesting part of our discussion was on the ESCO financing, and Mr. Brian Towne had joined us. You know, I think Mr. Kerr was right when he said the two committees, Audit and Finance and Buildings and Grounds and the whole board have to get together and really decide if we want to do that whole ESCO bonding, or if we wanna, you know, pick and choose, and what is the best way to spend our precious dollars that we hold and reserve from the 2016 bond proceeds? So we have to get much sharper on that in the coming weeks and also take into consideration East Pike Elementary School and the work we're going to be doing there for safety and security reasons. So we hope to have a joint meeting of almost like a workshop budget and Buildings and Grounds workshop. So I think we're making real progress in this field. We're not sitting on the money, however, we are really taking very seriously how we want to spend it, because these dollars aren't easy to come by, particularly with a bit of a declining tax base. And then finally, we discussed our 2016 bonds could be up for refinance next fall, I believe. We didn't get into that in any great detail, but we will when the time comes. So looking at the motions now, I would, if there's no objections from the board, I would like to take, do this, if this would work. We would take 8.2, 8.4, 8.5, 8.6 as as one, and then separate out 8.2 and 8.7, so Jared can give us some idea of how he arrived at his recommendations. So hearing no objections? Yeah, go ahead.
One note of correction here. You wanted to lump 8.2, 8.4, 8.5, and 8.6 together, and then take 8.3 and 8.7 separately?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I want to take 8.3, so Jared can give us an explanation of that, because it's been challenging this year. And then I think 8.7 we do separately, but the rest I think we can take as one.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to move that 8.2 for food service prices for 21, '22, 8.4, the propane bid, 8.5, the listing of the real estate taxes, 8.6, our survey proposal, be moved forward by the board tonight.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and 8.2, 4.5, and 6. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion by the board on those items? Nothing heard. We'll vote on those in the negative. Anybody opposed? Please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The chair assumes that those four motions passed unanimously. Go ahead with 8.3 and 8.7, Joel.
Okay, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, I move that the 2021, '22 food food service budget presented by ChartWells be approved and that the administration be authorized to enter it to a one-year contract, providing a guarantee by ChartWells that the IASD food service program will make a profit of $53,369.53.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. I think Jared, Julia was looking for some medical from the manager.
Yeah, Jared, if you could tell us a little bit about what's happened during the pandemic and how we're gonna make up for that, please.
Yeah, absolutely, man. You know, certainly, this school year has not been a normal year for anybody. The Food Service Department has been here the entire time and working hard to keep our kids fed, not only the kids who are in school, but we've also been maintaining a food and service program to kids who are not attending as well by distributing food every Wednesday for people who sign up who may not be in school full-time receiving meals. So it's been a very different year for us. The program without having all kids in school every day certainly is taking a hit this year. We are looking at a possible, we don't know yet, certainly the decisions that were made tonight, bringing more kids back in, will have a positive impact on the food service overall budget for this school year, but we are looking at somewhere around a $50,000 loss because of not having as many students in school and eating both breakfast and lunch. That being said, we have had an excellent, been running an excellent program for a long time, and over the past couple of years have been able to end the year in a positive. So we have built up reserves to help absorb that $50,000, possibly $50,000 loss that we may take this year. So that's a good note. There is no need for any type of transfer from the general fund that would be ultimately responsible if the food service program needed that money just to continue to run. So we don't need that, and that's a very, that's kudos to Eleanor Sherry, who has been running this program for many years now and doing a good job with it. The food service program has also purchased some significant equipment over the past couple of years and still maintain a positive balance in in the program to absorb a loss like $57,000 could be this year. So we're very, very happy with that. We are hoping, you know, the food service budget next year will make a profit of $53,000, even keeping prices the same. Now, that does take into account, and I think we all hope tonight, that next year will be more of a normal year with kids in pretty much five days a week. That is what the food service budget is presented here tonight takes into account. That kids will be in school five days a week from the very beginning, and then will guarantee the profit of just over $53,000. With kids in five days a week, that would mean that we are serving. We have pretty close to 50% participation in most of our schools in breakfast and lunch. We work very hard to increase that throughout the year and to get kids eating, because that really is what drives money into the program and allows it to end up in the black at the end of the year. So any questions from any of the board on the budget itself?
I think that's a good example of good management, saving for a rainy day, and we certainly had a rainy day year, so thank you.
Okay, is there any other comments, question, or further discussion by the board members on the food service budget? Nothing heard. We'll vote for that also in the negative. Anybody opposed? Please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The chair assumes that the motion passed unanimously. 8.7.
Okay, Mr. President, it's, it really pleases me to move that the administration be authorized to purchase approximately 255 Chromebooks and management licenses at an estimated cost of $72,675 for the 2021, '22 school year from the from the 2020, '21 budget, with $15,000 coming from the Chromebook Insurance Fund and the remaining funding coming from the technology budget.
Second. Okay, moved in seconded. Julia, did you need some discussion from Jared on this as well?
Yeah, I think it's important for the general public and for the board to thoroughly understand what's happened here with these Chromebooks, and I'm happy we could get a hold of them. So we've, this is, this is a great purchase. But Jared, could you give us a fill-in about how you've, how you're putting together the financing for these, please?
Yeah, absolutely. These Chromebooks are for the incoming freshman class next year. Our high school is one-on-one. In order to make sure that we have these in place for the freshmen next year, we are looking to purchase these or get the order in as soon as possible, just as we did last year. The pandemic has kind of caused a backlog for Chromebooks across the country, across probably the world. So it is taking time to get these in, and this is a very important component of what happens at the high school every year. So as a district, we want to make sure we have that in place for the beginning of school. Typically, we would order these after, in July, after the budget has been approved, but with everything going on, we don't feel that that would give us significant or enough time to get them in if we placed an order in July, so we're asking permission to do that today. What that means is we have to spend money that we normally would have spent in next year's budget or been approved in next year's budget. We need to spend that out of the current budget, and we're looking for about 72, almost $73,000, with $15,000 of that coming from our Chromebook Insurance Fund, which was set up five or six years ago to help manage our one-on-one program at the high school with creating or giving students the opportunity to pay into insurance fund that would help provide fixes to their Chromebooks if something happened to them during their four years. A student is given a Chromebook as a freshman, and then that Chromebook follows them the whole way through their high school career. They are responsible for that. They're not given a new one or a different one every single year. It goes home with them. It follows them. If they break it, the district certainly works with them to fix it. If they participate in our insurance program, which costs them $40 a year, they are given so many fixes free of cost because they bought the insurance. Any money that is left over after every student has paid and all fixes are taken care of for the year, that is rolled over from one year to the next and has allowed the district to build up money in this Chromebook Insurance Fund to help pay for future Chromebooks. And that was our plan the whole way along, as when the board and the administration worked to put that in place five or six years ago. This will be really the first year that we are actually pulling money out of it, and that is to help the district pay for this, as we wanted to do five or six years ago. So that is, you know, the the board had a vision back then, and we thank them for that, and is now finally coming to where we can do that. So that is a good thing, and we're glad to be here, and thank you to the board and the administration for working on that over the past couple of years. It helps save the general fund, having to foot the entire cost.
Yeah, that's the big benefit. It helps us save from the general fund, so I think it's wonderful. Thank you very much. I have no further comments, Walter.
Okay, Julia, thank you, and thanks, Jared. Any further comments, questions, or discussion from the board on 8.7? Nothing heard. We'll vote again in the negative. All those opposed, please say nay. Nothing heard. The chair assumes that the motion carried unanimously. Looks like we're down to the closing. Do we have any public comment on agenda items this evening from the public? Looks like you raised your hand. Go ahead, Chris.
I did. I know tonight was not an easy vote, and I appreciate that from the board, and I appreciate the caution of opening for four days with that fifth day being there for staff and maintenance to collect themselves and get ready for the following week. I think caution has to be observed. We have variants out there that are concerning to many. Other states are beginning to see increases in all populations, not just older populations with infections. I do appreciate all that this board has done. Your transparency has been excellent over the year. Your administration has worked above and beyond what has been called upon them to do. The teachers have been absolutely outstanding. And I understand that it's been a difficult year for students. I'd like to say that in my 26 years of teaching, as difficult as adults interpreted what students were doing, students did have disadvantages this year. But I think it's remarkable how the student body has cooperated and moved on through this pandemic. It's historic, it's been difficult, but they are resilient, and they have risen to the occasion, just as the administration and the board have. So I compliment you, but I also caution you. So I compliment you, but I also caution you. You might have to step back, and I hope you won't be afraid to do it if and when that time comes. Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Anybody else, public comment? Okay, nothing heard. We did have some enclosures this evening. We had an executive session. Prior to our board meeting, it covered school safety items related to our reopening. Our next board meeting will be a regular meeting on April 12th at 7:00 PM to discuss general purposes. Our next committee meetings are outreach on March 29th at 5:30, academic committee on April 5th, and policy and personnel on April 12th, all three at 5:30. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any objections to adjourning at this point in time? Very quickly, nothing heard. We stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thanks, Walter. Thanks, Mike.